Session, October twenty-six, twenty-two. Up first, we've got Veterans Summer Program Update and Review. Oh, before I start that, hang on a second, though. Number two is going to be a change. Rebecca's not going to be able to be here today. So in the place of that, I'm going to have Vance Stringham with a tower purchase for nine-one-one. So now back to number one, Veterans Summer Program Update Review. Lori Darga. And Heath. Okay, you need to hit the button, please.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Morning.
I wanted to thank you for allowing the Veterans Service Office to provide programs to our veterans in Roscommon County. To give you an accounting, I had Marcy Dankert run the numbers for me a couple of weeks ago. The funds that we have received, we received two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars in grant funding from the Roscommon County Community Foundation. And then three thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars in donations from individuals and businesses that allowed us to put on thirteen different programs for our veterans this year. And because of the outreach, we were able to connect to nineteen different veterans that had never been in our office and didn't know what benefits they had. And they've since been in and we've been able to connect them with their benefits. The programs provide wonderful bonding times with the veteran and their families at no cost to them, and it creates community among our Roscommon County veterans. So that's my report. I just wanted to thank you for allowing us to do that because it means so much to the veterans here.
Hey, Heath, anything to add, Sheriff?
Yeah, this just, every year, we get our GBX report from federal government. It kind of gives us the state of every county, how many veterans, the population, how much federal money is brought in because of the veterans living in our county. The most recent one, the twenty-twenty-one report, was put out a few months ago, so they're hard numbers. So twenty-twenty-one compared to twenty-twenty, we lost ninety veterans through whatever means, moving away, passing away, our population decreased by ninety. But even with losing ninety veterans, we were able to increase the monetary amount of expenditures by one million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So that happens year after year from outreach programs, from connecting to veterans in the community that might not know what benefits they have, bringing them into the office, filing claims for disability, for healthcare, that all has a dollar value associated to it. So the programs that Lori promotes, they really do have a big effect. It's a way of skirting around mass advertising. In our world, grassroots advertising is the best. If a veteran hears another veteran got a benefit, they want to know how, why. It brings them into the office. So on these programs, not only do they provide outreach to bring veterans in, but it's getting family members, spouses, dependents out in the community who may not have money to go kayaking, to go to the zoo, to get out there and experience what Roscommon has. And that's a brief synopsis of our GBX report. Any questions on any of that?
Has she got anything?
We truly have one of the finest veterans offices in the state of Michigan, and you have superb volunteers. You know, what a dedicated staff you have.
We're very fortunate.
Thank you for both being here, and do me a favor, please pass that on to the guys down in the office, because, I mean, you've got Jeannie down there, and obviously Dan, Alicia, you've got a whole crew down there that are really helpful, and they really care about the veterans. It's not just a job, it's a way of life for these folks. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just to piggyback on what they're saying here, as a veteran in the county, I did participate in the plane ride, the zoo, the canoe ride, and the miniature golf. And it's really nice to have these programs available to the veterans to enrich them and their families' lives. It truly does make a difference. And as Lori says, it helps reach out to these people, to get them to come in and see what they've got coming that they've neglected for many years. Also, to go along with what Mark says about how well-known our office is, just a reminder, we had the seated governor of the state of Michigan come right here in this room because of our veterans' office and spent more than an hour in a session, in a roundtable, with our veterans and our veterans' office workers. And showed the concern from the state of helping in any way that they can to even improve this office further. It's really, it's just like icing on the cake to have the governor, didn't come to any other veterans' office in the state of Michigan, but came here and was really impressed with the job that we're doing, especially for the female veterans that have been neglected for far too long, and they're doing an excellent job with that. Very good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks a lot. Nice report.
Thank you.
Okay, number two. Vance Stringham, nine-one-one director.
Good morning.
Morning.
Appreciate the opportunity to get on the agenda short notice. So I have a couple of things. I'd like to start off just a brief report on how your nine-one-one operation's going, if I may. Staffing-wise, we're currently at nine. Everybody's doing well. A rumor has it we may be losing one soon, but that is a wait-and-see situation, but we're in a very good spot right now here. I don't say fully staffed, because that's just a curse word, but we're in a spot where we have a couple of openings we need to fill yet, but we're doing good. Budget-wise, we are, obviously, the budget process is in order. We are looking good, the mileage passed, et cetera. I have been tucking money away for one of the projects I'll discuss here in just a little bit. That is looking good as well. We have some expenditures up on the horizon as far as the nine-one-one equipment needs to be refreshed, those sorts of things, but that is part of the normal plan. So CAD-RMS and JMS project, we are beginning again, and we have our first demonstration next week with a vendor and keeping everybody in the process on that. As you recall, Motorola went through and we're working on something different there. And the only other thing I wanted to bring up is if you've talked to any of the fire chiefs, they're working on a MABUS system, mutually box alarm system, and getting everybody on the same page is, can be difficult, but we're working with them and how that will impact the dispatch operations. So as far as I know, everything's going well. I keep good track on it. I've got a great team and we're looking good, so questions on that so far?
Okay. Fund balance, okay?
It is. I have my six months of operating plus a good chunk put away for the tower, one of the tower power projects, which has a lot of zeros after it. So I've been planning for that for several years, so.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, the first tower project, I have two. The first one I'll bring up has to do with the fund balance, the capital improvement I've been putting away. We did get the study back from Motorola, and I would have bet money that our dead zones were Nester. It is actually a very large chunk of Roscommon Township and Lake Township. The topography of the county plays a lot into that, and Nester has some weak spots as well. I did get a ballpark quote from Motorola for a project that would put tower top amplifiers on the existing towers around our county and put up one additional site, and very expensive. So that being said, it is a step in the right direction. I think your police officers especially would tell you how poor the coverage could be in some areas inside buildings, what have you, in that project. Is, it's a need. It's more than a want. It's definitely a need. And even the fire departments will be able to tell. There's times where you would think you'd have coverage and you don't. I'll put together another presentation for the future to show you what our coverage looks like now, what it proposed would be, so. Okay. And the reason I wanted to get on the agenda today is we have the opportunity to purchase that two-hundred-foot tower on top of Pioneer Hill behind Core. It's not the tower located inside the core courtyard, it's the one across the street. I talked with M thirty-three Access, and they've offered to sell that to us for a ridiculously low price, seven thousand, five hundred dollars. That is a brand-new, with all the enhancements it has, about thirty-five thousand-dollar project, new. It is ten years old, is an excellent repair, and they no longer have use for it. And I saw the opportunity. Now, why would we want this? Again, this, it's layers. As the communications director, we want layers of backup. It would be for auxiliary communications, which would be your local amateur radio operators for Ares, amateur emergency services. Okay? Vanessa could talk more about that as well. We have the option for what's called GMRS, general mobile radio system, allows radio communications, direct point-to-point, et cetera. That could be leveraged for that as well, again, for search teams, search and rescue, or everyday communications for that matter. I've already been approached by Roscommon Schools for potentially locating a, their bus radio repeater up there. I think that would be a great benefit where they're at now. In fact, I don't even think they're using where they have now, just because of the poor coverage they get out of it. So that's something I would work with Superintendent Erickson, if she had further interest on that. There's additional ideas that I have not fully vetted out. I have communicated with the state of Michigan as far as using that for a radio site. One, it's too close to the current tower up on Skyline in Crawford County. And the other thing, it's not the right design for their equipment, so that would not be an option. However, because of its location, I am going to be communicating with some cellphone companies, some carriers, to see if we could lease to them and potentially put some revenue back in to nine-one-one or even the county, depending on how that operates. So that part is still a question mark, but I can tell you it would pay for itself probably the first year if we can make that happen, depending on how we work that out. So bringing it to you today because I have my authority board November fourth, and then the commissioners' meeting's the next day. So I wanted to bring it to you to say, if my authority board approves it, I would bring it to you in the form of a motion to forward that purchase on the next one. Yes.
Our next meeting's the ninth.
Ninth. Okay, so eighth.
Okay, your authority board's on the eighth.
Together anymore, yep.
Your authority board's on the election day.
Ah, yes. Ah, yes. That's a good one. So that's what I have. Any questions?
Um, I guess, oh, hang on, Ken. So you have to take it to the authority board, yes, so you've got a week or two that you can get some of these other questions answered, present it to them, and then bring back to us also, so you don't need anything for us other than?
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
Thumbs up or a thumbs down. Okay, Ken?
So this is a closed offer, they're not considering other bids or selling to someone else at this time?
I spoke to, it is his name, but Gary, the founder and owner of M thirty-three Access, he was excited to make this opportunity available for the county if it happened, so it's not, he's been approached by a lot of folks and made us a priority.
Okay, M thirty-three was an ISP. Have you looked into other ISPs maybe wanting to piggyback on that tower, too, then?
Potentially. That would be something that would work out. I do know that they have some customers currently on that tower, and they would ask that they be allowed to remain. So if we can get a cellphone provider on that tower, that would satisfy that as well and potentially allow for some revenue.
So there's current leaseholders, and that money would then go to the county if they own the tower?
That would, because the internet actually into the tower, it would still be owned by M thirty-three Access, we could, part of that deal, because we're getting such a good price, I would be reluctant to charge him money, depending on how long, but it's something we can explore with M thirty-three. But they would operate those, the ISP, and allow those customers to remain. But I can tell you, on the open market, this tower site could probably easily go for about twenty thousand.
I'm comfortable. You sold me on the lease part, also to the maintenance. What maintenance value do we have to do? What maintenance upkeep?
Oh, maintenance and upkeep?
Right. Years old, I mean, I don't know that. I'm familiar with time, remember when I first got elected, Carl Geiger and I went out there in West Branch, and they put the tower up, one of the first in the county area. But what do we have to do to maintain a tower?
You want it on a regular inspection schedule and follow the recommendations of the company that makes those inspections. Overall, the biggest thing, it's a, I believe it's a freestanding guide, freestanding, would be the support structures, the cables. And yeah, when the time comes, that could be expensive, but it has decades to maintain it.
For seventy-five hundred bucks, you could probably scrap it out and get that kind of cash.
And that was, if, that was the original plan for that tower, and that's what caught my attention, so this is an opportunity.
Okay, if I may, I'm going to talk to these two people, but Sheriff, anything to add in regards to this? Hey, Vanessa? Okay. I just wanted, just wanted to go to you people, you've got a lot more expertise than I do, anyway, we do, I should say. All right. What are your authority board? As far as I'm concerned, I don't sense any, anybody opposed to this, so at this point. Great idea.
Thank you.
Right? Thank you. All right, item number three, Roscommon County United Way Grant Application. Gary Benchley and Tom Pettit, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, it's been an exciting year this year for United Way. Yeah, I'll begin with the grant that you gave us that made it all possible for the Helping Alice program. And September, two hundred thousand dollar end-of-the-year gift from the Consumers Energy to support our Helping Alice program. And now, winning the People's Award from this Consumers Energy Foundation, a two-hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to support Dish of the Day Mobile Soup Kitchen. And it's a true honor to be one of two organizations in the state of Michigan that won this grant. Your thank you letter and your letter of support, we want to thank you for that because we truly believe that having the support of our community helped us win. I've talked to a couple of the reviewers, and they thought it was a fantastic idea, and they liked the way that we had the community involved, and it was inclusive for all the community. So we're just here this morning to tell you thank you, and we look forward to serving the community, and hopefully, end of January, around tip uptown, we'll have a truck here, and we'll be able to roll it out to the community. Thank you.
All right. Good. Thank you. Nice to see you come with stuff like that.
It's good news.
Short and sweet.
Well, I appreciate that, too. All right. With that, we will recess and be back here at ten o'clock for a regular meeting. Thank you. Please, I got to start over? technicalities. Good morning. Welcome to the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners meeting, October twenty-six, twenty-two. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Melvin, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, roll call of board members. Michelle, please.
Melvin.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
McInnes.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Snyder.
Here.
Item number four, approval of the agenda, please.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the agenda. Any further discussion on the agenda from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
McInnes.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Public comment, agenda items only, limited to five minutes. Anything, any public comment in regards to the agenda at this time, please? Okay, thank you, Andy. Item six, this is a, we are going to need to go into a public hearing in regards to a community development block grant for our housing department. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to go into a public hearing for the CDBG housing.
Motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to go into public hearing. Okay, Laura's already come up, right? You're going to have to bite you up. Hey, you need to push the green button, please, there, Laura.
All righty.
Oh, excuse me, thank you. That's why we have a clerk. Thank you.
Good job, Michelle.
Roll call.
Yes.
Back to you.
Yes. McInnes.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Got it right back to you, didn't I? Okay. All right, now, Laura, go ahead.
All righty, good morning.
You've got some information you need to read into the record, I believe.
The purpose of this hearing is to give the residents a moment to either comment or their concerns about our funding. For our program income, program year twenty, we did receive one hundred and three thousand, five hundred forty-two, and those were the funds we expended through this past year. We were able to fund twelve projects out of that money. Six roofs, four wells, one septic, and one hot water tank, we were able to assist twenty-three residents with those funds. Incomes out of those residents were nine thousand, nine hundred thirty-six annual income, and the highest was thirty-seven, seven ninety-eight. We did receive our approval for the next program year, program year twenty-one, we received sixty-two thousand, two hundred sixty-eight, and Medicaid approved our budget to use this for emergency funds, which we can do these same types of projects for, for our low, moderate-income families. And like I said, Medicaid did approve this if we are able to continue to expend these dollars in the future with the Housing Commission.
Okay. So at this point, we had to do a public hearing today, which we're doing right now, and we've read that into the record. Anything that the board has to do in regards to that, other than just to have a public hearing, right?
Right, and if there's any public comment on the funding.
Okay. Do we have any public comment at this time in regards to the community development block grant program? Okay? Nope? Okay? All right. And before you go, we've got three young ladies out here that sit on your board.
Yes, we do.
Have you introduce them, please?
You want to stand up? This is Sally Tewilliger. She's been on our board since ninety, two thousand and three. And then we've got Carol Newman, and we have Virginia Adel.
Okay. All right.
And just make a side note, we did lose one of our board members, Jerry McCormick, this past week, and he would have been on our board thirty years in January. So these are the, our board, and Dave Russo sits on our board also. They approve all of the funds for the projects. I don't approve the projects. They, we have to take it to the board for motion for them to allow us to use it.
All right. All right. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, I motion to come out of public hearing and go back into our regular meeting, please.
Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Melvin, or Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo, any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Melvin.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
McInnes.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Administrator Controller Report, please. Jody Valentino. Good morning.
So I don't have a lot, because it's really just centered around three very specific things at work recently. With the lawsuits, we do have no change in, all of them with the exception of the Ostrigan versus Board of Canvassers. The motion to dismiss was granted by the Court of Appeals. They provided a one-sentence reason that the appeal was moot now that the incumbent won the recount. Eric did inform me that they are going to appeal up to the Supreme Court, basically asking them to have the Court of Appeals actually review the decision. Couple, couple changes in legislative updates. Governor Whitmer did approve the Michigan Trial Court's authority to impose fees through May first, twenty twenty-four, so that piece sits there until they can continue to work on how they're going to reorganize the court funding under the states. Additionally, counties do have until December first to challenge broadband maps. I do believe that is something that our EDC has been working on reviewing. These maps were actually issued through the FCC as part of a broadband data collection process. As you are aware, they show us it's like almost fully serviced with broadband for our area, but as most people can attest to, there are areas on that map that show service that absolutely do not have service. Commissioner Melvin is in one of those locations. Essentially, what, what they have done at that level is they take that area and they say, okay, most of that community has it, and they just cross out a section. They don't look that between A and B connection, there is no fiber or internet that actually runs through there. So just to let you know, if you want to bring that back to EDC, to make sure they know they do have December first deadline on that as well. Really, the big, the big three things for the last two weeks have been the Lake Special Assessment update. Obviously, we had the hearing, and that was successful, pretty good attendance. I would say there was probably about fifty, fifty people in attendance, including the commissioners that were able to attend, law firm, et cetera. There is a final hearing for those who had not received notice but are now included due to some information received from Roscommon Township at the public hearing that was held at the end of September. That will be for that group only on December eighth at two PM in Circuit Court. Stacy will be attending the last meeting of December to explain then the next steps, costs, and funding needs to the Board of Commissioners as it moves forward into twenty twenty-three. Obviously, the budget has taken the biggest sense of priority in trying to find those non-statutory areas for the Board of Commissioners to make decisions about. We got down to seven hundred and three, but it sounds like there were a couple hit or misses one way or another when the department heads went through the budget, so my guess is we'll still be pretty close to that, but it'll probably be more like seven oh five that we still need for a budget shortfall as that stands. In addition to that, the Sheriff's Department has a jail grant that is probably one of the most cumbersome reimbursement grants for fifty-nine thousand dollars that I have ever gone through in my life. You can only submit on a month-by-month basis for nine months' worth of reimbursement expenditures, and it takes them twenty-four to forty-eight hours to approve what you've put in the computer before you can open up the next month. So that's just kind of been super fun to deal with. Noel and I made the decision to change, mostly Noel, the open enrollment. Traditionally, we hold it, try to hold it the first week of November, last week of October, to get everything done early. At this point, with so many things up in the air with the twenty twenty-three budget, it will be the first week of December, not until after the budget is actually approved with any changes put in there as well, so that then we have that. But that will be put in there as well, so that then we have that, but that will be later than normal. We could have done it the last week of November, but we don't want to miss people that are going to be gone for a week deer hunting, so, that's about it.
Okay, any commissioners have anything you'd like to discuss with Jody in regards to her report? Okay, item number eight, correspondence, item A, Horton Lake resident in regard, email in regards to Horton Lake lake level. Item B, Michigan Association of Counties, grant alert. Item C, Horton Lake resident, Horton Lake lake level, both of those, I read those, and they both referred to the number on Special Assessment District that was held back on October 14th at the Circuit Court, so. And item D is Consumers Energy, 2022 people, award winners, and then in there was that grant that Tom Pettit and Sherry eventually were here from United Way to discuss. Any questions from any court, any commissioner in regards to correspondence at this time? Any commissioner? Hearing or seeing none. Item nine, monthly department heart report, we've got MSG Extension Report from 10/12, and Roscommon Animal Shelter Control Report from September 2022. Any questions in regards to department reports from any commissioner at this time? Okay, item 10, any visitors here that'd like to be recognized at this time, please? Yes, sir. Our gentleman, gentleman, excuse me, go ahead.
Want us to come up front or from the back row?
Oh, come on up, identify yourself first, I don't, who are you representing first?
Sir, my name's Mike McAdmore, I addressed the board about a month and a half ago, I'm a retired Lieutenant Colonel from the Michigan Army National Guard, and I'd like to do a little follow-up on the Camp Grailing expansion.
Okay, how about we put you on under a public comment, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, since you've been here before, you know the drill anyway, right?
Not really, sir.
Right, okay.
Morning, gentlemen, ladies. My name is Montgomery Bolus, I'm from Crawford County. And if I may, I'd like to have a few minutes of your time during the public comment session to talk to you about the Camp Grailing.
All right, well, okay, so both of these, both of you will be on, right? Gotcha, no problem, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just wanted to know that, all right? Okay, any honored visitors that'd like to be recognized at this time? Okay, on, on to number 11, unfinished or new business, item A, Roscommon County General Operating Millage Restoration Headley Discussion. Anybody have anything to bring up? We need to discuss that, we need to get this out there, have you been out in the community talking about it? I have. Mr. Milburn?
Very much so, and I have, have noticed a tremendous amount of support from the county employees and the departments and just, just all around, there's, there's a lot more discussion out there on the social media, getting the message out. I think it's a much better job than what's ever been done before.
Suggestion. Um, I actually, I'd like to actually see it done, I'd like to see each of us take a poll and sit at our respective townships and pass out this information sheet and answer any questions that anybody would have. What's your thoughts on that, gentlemen? You've got Denton, right, that's one of our larger townships, Richfield's one of our larger townships?
What's the November meetings?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about being at the polls on November 8th.
Yeah.
During the day, handing these out.
I have three townships.
Well, do what you can, but, you know, I've got one great big one, so that's one, I pretty much pigeonhole that one. Mr. Milburn?
May have to do, Mr. Chair, but I, my, my experience is that very few people have actually come up to us on voting day to get information.
All right.
I'll do it because you requested, but I don't know if it's going to have any impact.
Well, if you can turn one person.
Again, I, again.
That's an impact.
We've been doing this a long time, and chances of somebody coming up to Dave or myself, or Tim, or any of us at voting day, asking us questions regarding the millage will probably be very, I'll do it because I think it needs to be done, I don't think it's going to have much of an impact.
Yeah?
I got it on my calendar.
Okay, all right, anybody else got any ideas? We did pursue some signs.
Signs would be, what, signs would be helpful, but just a piece of paper.
We can't get them done on a short notice, that's a negative. Okay, I did personally, with the help of Julie, author a letter and put it into resort or last week. Give me my point, my viewpoint as a resident, so, anyone else unwilling to do that? What's that?
We've already had stuff in the paper, Mr. Chair. And if you, if you think a letter from the commissioners as a whole, signed by the board, would be, would be happy to sign that.
At this point, it's too.
Well, because people already, people already voted.
I'm just, I'm just.
Knows first.
I'm just saying, if anybody else, I was.
We stood out in opportunity.
It's too late, isn't it?
Oh, I might have another week.
All right, okay. Just want, just.
Right, nothing a week before.
Right.
Okay, all right, good, anybody else got anything?
I already went, I went Friday morning. That went well, they had a dog, I was happy.
All right, anything else from anybody? Okay, motions and resolutions, number 12, Michelle, you are up again, please. Motion number one.
Move to adopt the L-4402 statement showing taxable valuations and mills apportioned by the County Board of Commissioners for the year 2022, and authorize Jamie Hauserman, Equalization Director, to sign the L-4402, thereby authorizing and directing the various assessing officers to spread the rates against the taxable valuation for 2022.
Make that motion. I'll second it, motion is made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Snyder to adopt the L-4402 statement showing taxable valuation and mills apportionment for year 2022. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time, please? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion number two, please.
Move to approve the reappointment of Charlene Baker to the Roscommon County Department of Health and Human Services Board for a three-year term beginning November 1, 2022, through October 31, 2025.
Second.
Okay, motion is made by Commissioner Russo, seconded by Commissioner Muckenthaler to approve the reappointment of Charlene Baker to the Roscommon County Department of Health and Human Resource, Human Services Board for a three-year term. Any further discussion from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Milburn.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Committee reports.
I apologize, I love my plan, no offense, and that's hard enough, I did, sure for the agenda, I've been, I did.
Mr. Muckenthaler.
I had nothing the last two weeks.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing I had was the LEPC meeting, the Emergency Management. I had the Emergency Management meeting last week, uh, we just conducted routine business, got updates on how things are going. Of note, Ed is going to need two new deputies because of the upcoming retirements. Uh, they said COVID transmission is high, but it's low to medium for the number of positive cases. Also, Vanessa in the Emergency Management Office also is monitoring two other situations, the equine and esophilitis, there was a positive case, the horse died. And the, the avian flu outbreak is still prevalent, and they're going to weekly updated meetings, briefings, starting September, starting September 9th. Anything else that you can remember that, of note, Vanessa, for the Emergency Management? Okay, thank you, that's all I have, sir.
Okay, Mr. Milburn?
Chair, Special Assessment District, we went to the, to the hearing for that, NMCAA, COA. We do have a meeting this afternoon, just for the public to know, at 1:00, that I'll be attending for the COA. And also, too, just on a side note, I'm intending to put Eugene Thompson for Person of the Year. If, if the gentleman of the board have anybody else they want to put up for the Person of the Year, request that you put it up, you give it to the chairman, so we can look at that more closely. That's all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, um, I also attended a Special Assessment District meeting in regards to Horton Lake, and so did Mr. Russo. You neglect, but he didn't bring his, he didn't bring his planner with him. NMCA, which is Northern Michigan Commissioners or Association, on October 17th, held right here. Agenda meeting on the 20th, and did meet with the Union Sheriff, Mr. Commissioner Russo and myself, on Thursday, the 20th, also, so. All right, who else got anything? Okay, now, on to public comment, number 14, go ahead.
Yes, sir, my name's Mike McAdmore, I met you guys a few, few weeks ago.
Can you please turn the mic?
It is on, good.
Thank you.
Never been.
And he's got a good, and he's got a good voice, so, go ahead.
I just want to do a follow-up from our, our last presentation that Kurt Keo and I gave about six, seven weeks ago. And I watched, I watched the, on Zoom, I watched the last presentation when you had the camp commander in here giving his, his side. I'll, I'll follow up with, I know it's brief, and you guys got a lot of fish fry in Roscommon County, but one, just as a side note, the National Guard doesn't have anything to do with those veteran grants. I just want to make that sure that no one thought someone's taking credit for that. Camp Grailing has never showed a need for the additional 163,000 acres. Again, we, we heard a good briefing from Camp Commander, but there's never been a documented need for the 163,000 acres. And actually, when you really figure the, the land space, when you consider, he said right here in this meeting hall, that 40, 50 soldiers, four or five times a year, we're going to use it. Now, I'm, I'm from Grailing, and Grailing math kind of looks at it, that's about 800 acres a soldier just for four or five weeks a year, that's, to me, is crazy for our state lands. Camp Grailing and the Michigan National Guard never was asked by the National Guard Bureau or the Joint Chiefs of Staff to do this. This is Camp Grailing's meaning, they're trying to rebrand their organization who called NADWIC, no one in the military, not in their MTONE, which is their document for organizational equipment and, and organization and people. They don't call it NADWIC, they still call it Maneuver Training Center, Camp Grailing. If this was to pass, the second thing that would, would happen is the Air National Guard, according to Colonel Myers and other briefings, would be they're going to go after the airspace, and that will completely change the aeronautical community in the area, and I'll just leave that alone for right now. This has been in the works for the last, since 2018, 2019. And again, I'll remind the board and all the township elected officials in the five, five counties surrounding Camp Grailing that very, very few of you were ever even contacted, notified, informed. And if it wasn't for an MLive article written by Matt Miller, about a week and a half into that 30-day public comment period, the original 30 days, we'd have had this just jammed down our throats and had it taken. So, remember, Roscommon and Calcasco, Mesaki and Montmorency County, as far as I can tell today, no one was ever contacted that was an elected official or even given any consideration. I just want to remind everybody of that. When he says short-term leases, short-term, the last short-term leases were done in the mid-'80s. So, short-term, that 20-year lease, that really means forever. So, a 20-year lease really means forever. He downplays the access, and when he talks about hunting season, he's only talking about, given the public for sure, deer season, 50 November to 30 November. Most of us that are outdoors people, whether we hunt, whether we fish, fly a kite, pick mushrooms, whatever, we use that land more than the two weeks during deer season. So, there's, out of 52 weeks, 50 of them are on the table, 11 and a half months. I, I just want to make sure one is tracking that, because, because he's very schooled in public speaking, I'll just leave that alone. Um, I live, and my mom lives, on Lake Margarite. We have four to six, I sit on the rad for Grailing Township. We have 400 to 600 parts per trillion of PFOS and three creeks draining into Lake Margarite right off Camp Grailing's property. Not saying that's his fault, not saying that's the National Guard's fault today, it's from things that happened years ago. But I'm telling you, if the efforts to put, were put into this expansion, were put into PFOS and potential contamination, and picking up the trash, and picking up the brass in county roads and the lakes, and some of you may or may not have seen those pictures, but if that effort was put into the deception and the coordination with congressional officials to expand Camp Grailing, if that was put into fixing what they got and maintaining what they have, we'd probably all be a lot better off, including that PFOS. I've lost two bird dogs due to that PFOS contamination. I was a deputy commander, bought a house behind the airfield, I had no idea it was contaminated, but. He downplays, he downplays the contractor, there's some questions that came from the left side of the room during that Zoom meeting.
Mike, I hold it to five minutes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, all right.
Thanks for your comments, sir.
Yeah, for your, yep, thank you for your comments. More public comment? Okay, come on up, sir. Mike, I apologize, I didn't remind you that to start with, all right?
No problem.
Okay. Identify yourself, and, okay, good.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Montgomery Bolus, I'm a full-time resident of Crawford County. Blessed to have a humble little place on the Manistee River. I want to tell you why I'm here. This is the ninth meeting that I've personally attended pertaining to talking about the Camp Grailing discussion. The meetings I haven't attended personally, I've watched on YouTube. If you Google Camp Grailing Expansion on YouTube, on the YouTube channel, virtually every meeting that Colonel Myers has spoke at is, is available for your review. Everything I'm about to share with you, I've researched extensively. Colonel Myers has been extremely deceptive when he has approached the various municipalities and given his presentation. There's an old adage that goes, conceal the truth is to tell a lie. Conceal the truth is to tell a lie, a lot of times, by the things that we don't say, we, we can mask the truth. For instance, and first, I, for the public record, I want to mention two specific documents that you can refer to. One is in a magazine called D Business, which is Detroit Business Magazine, specifically the May-June edition of 2022, pages 41 through 43, that's one of my sources. Another one of my sources is even more important. If you Google National Guard Strategic Plan, there's a 63-page document online that'll bore you to tears. But what that document details is everything that Camp Grailing has planned for the next 20 years, and it does it, it says, you know, this has to happen by 2023, this has to happen by 2025, this has to happen by 2030. But what I'm about to share with you comes right out of these two sources, although I have other sources. But if you want to spot-check me to see if I'm being truthful with you today and factual, D Business Magazine and the Strategic And factual, D Business Magazine and the Strategic Plan for Camp Grailing will support what I'm saying. First of all, I wanted, what I want to tell you is. Camp Grailing is a hundred, presently, as it sits, is a hundred and forty-eight thousand acres of public land. That's two hundred and thirty-one square miles, because we tend to think in terms of square mileage. What does that mean? Of the fifty-three National Guard Training Centers in the world, there's forty-eight in the contiguous forty-eight uh states. And there's a few like in Guam and the Virgin Islands and whatnot. Camp Grailing is overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly the largest National Guard Training Facility in America. By tens of thousands of acres, so this is not a matter of Camp Grailing being undersized. Because the truth of the matter is it's much larger than any other National Guard Training Facility. And it might shock you to find out that most of the land that they currently control is never used, not used one, one minute a year. So this isn't a matter of Camp Grailing needing additional acreage, they have more than enough. I'm concerned for your community. In your, in previous meetings, Camp, I listened to Colonel Myers tell you. That one of the reasons they need the area in your community is they need distance to engage in what's called electromagnetic warfare training. Electromagnetic warfare training has been studied for fifty years and is proven to have adverse health effects. And not just animals and insects and fish, but humans too. It's related to uh bloodborne cancers like leukemias and bone cancers and brain cancers. Your area, more so than any other area, because your area represents the southernmost. Uh, proposed expansion area is an area that they're likely to, and it's actually on a map that they have online. It says for your area. That they want to engage in electromagnetic warfare training. So your area, more so than even other areas, because they need distance, meaning that they're gonna set up in your southernmost zone. To give them the distance they can reach out to the other areas to engage in this electromagnetic warfare training. This has been very downplayed by Colonel Myers. And I just want to bring it to your attention. Um, it's, it's something that each of you owe it to your community, to your constituents to look into. Because it's completely glossed over by the Colonel. I'm out of time right now, I, I could talk to you honestly for another two hours about this, I want to thank you for your time. And I want to encourage you to maybe do a little research on your own.
This time, okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Eric Ostrich.
Eric.
Five minutes, sir.
I understand.
Almost got it down to a sign.
I'll let you do your. Hopefully you're not running my time yet, sir.
Hey, uh, with election coming up, I want to talk about our registered voting rolls here in Roscommon. And uh, the need for township clerks to get them cleaned up. This topic should be of utmost concern to everyone here, this is a problem everywhere, not in just Roscommon. But it shouldn't be an excuse for us not to get our house in order. Here's a quote from the Michigan Elections Systems Structure Overview website. Of the eight states that administer elections on a local level, Michigan is the largest state, both in terms of its population. And geography to do so, involving eighty-three county clerks, two hundred and eighty city clerks. Twelve hundred and forty township clerks, Michigan's elections systems is administered by one thousand six hundred and three county and local election officials. Making it the most decentralized election systems in the nation, end quote. I've given everyone here a copy of the Michigan Voter Registration Cancellation Procedures. As you will see, there are a lot of things that should be happening here in Roscommon. And I suspect few, if any of them, are being followed, without election integrity, our citizenship will continue to distrust our election process. I'm concerned about our voter rolls because of what I discovered during the primary election when Cam was seen for votes. I was shocked to discover what I did and I think you will be also. Initially, I obtained the voter registration list for Gary Shenhiggins from Michelle Stevenson. And I met and talked with a lot of people and I documented what I found on the spreadsheet I was provided. I'm gonna provide a few highlights regarding what I found. There were six, four thousand six hundred fifty-two registered voters in Gary Shenhiggins Township based on the large sampling of canvassing I did. I would estimate that fifteen to twenty percent of them are illegitimate. I either personally visited or left door hangers on two thousand four hundred and sixty-eight homes, and of those registered voters I called on. Of those voters, I estimate physically, I physically talked to thirty-five to forty percent or about a thousand voters. Of those one thousand voters, one hundred and ninety-two were illegitimate. If these percentages held up throughout my district alone, it would mean that eight hundred and ninety-four voters in District Two shouldn't be on the rolls in Gary Shenhiggins Township alone. And that's a lot of voters, here's what I found knocking on doors, homes were condemned that had listed voters. One was born in nineteen forty-one, the voter rolls, of course, show the year of birth. County residents said the registered voters hadn't lived there in years, some said twelve years or more, no house at that address, several were businesses, one was a Roscommon Insurance Building, motels. Eleven voters uh with the same name were registered at Alsalvo Trail and another eleven of the same registered voters were registered at Alsalvo River Trail. Okay, there were several empty lots with, with registered voters, moved to Alabama, old tenants, registered voters in the home years ago, divorced, no longer lives there, lives in Florida. Old owner moved to New Hampshire, sold on to new owners twenty-five years ago. Registered in Florida, Florida, no longer lives there, registered to vote in Chicago, no house, no mailbox, no driveway. Abandoned gas station, addresses the Roscommon Area District Library, North Area Credit Union at another address, Roscommon Indoor Garden. Four hundred Lake Street, another one, five storefronts, Pioneer Weekly and Monthly Rental Home. Eleven voters, hadn't been there since nineteen ninety-nine, born in nineteen oh eight, not there, my favorite one. Male, born in nineteen twelve and female, born in nineteen twenty-one, and there wasn't even a house at the address. Moved to Peru years ago, moved back to Canada two years ago, in retirement home, hasn't owned a home for twelve years. Moved to Oakland, California seventeen years ago, moved to Alaska twenty-five years ago, moved to Cadillac years ago, additionally. There were hundreds of single-family homes and addresses where no one answered with several people that were registered at that address. That couldn't possibly support that many people living there. Why is this important? If fifteen to twenty percent of registered voters are people who are no longer eligible to vote but still on the voter rolls. Anyone who knows that information could cause a lot of problems with our elections. If I can find out who these people are, anyone could, I won the last election by only five votes, need I say more? If mail-in voting becomes legal, as in proposed in Proposal Two in this election. Voting by mail will become more common and will make it much easier to cheat. Voter harvesting will become rampant, it's already happening in other states. I have personal experience in mail-in voting, I was the plaintiff with President Trump in his lawsuit against Secretary of State Benson regarding mail-in voting in Oakland County. There were five hundred thousand mail-in ballots that were funneled in four locations, not ha, and not having actual identification is a big problem. Absentee voting is one thing, mail-in voting is another. One, our state sent out millions of mail-in ballots and I believe there was a lot of fraud in the twenty twenty election. Anyone with knowledge of the voter registration rolls could easily mail in fraudulent ballots from those rolls that, from people that were no longer there. If Proposal Two passes, we will be in for a big problem, we must reject it. I hope our county clerk will take a leading role with the township clerks to clean up our voting rolls. It needs to start at the local level. Thank you. Only had less than fifteen seconds, I almost made it.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Aye.